The views, information and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives or its employees.
Okay, well, I know Mr. Anabelli was with us, so with that, good evening and welcome everyone. We'll call the regular council meeting of February 28th to order. And first of all, under presentations, we would like to welcome Dr. Stanley Anabelli, the Medical Health Officer, just basically for an update, doctor, if you don't mind. Yeah, it's way too low. Just excuse me, doctor, we have to turn your voice up, we can hardly hear you. Sorry, can you try that again? Try it again? Nope.
One, can you say anything?
There you go, now, now we can hear you. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, good evening everyone and thanks for the opportunity to be with council and to just provide this update. And I'm very happy that you guys wanted me to be here today, just giving this new transition phase and what that means for everyone. I am not here alone from the health authority. I do have with me our director, Sheena Grimes, for the Southeast Nine Network, which is the Estevan area. And I also have our manager for that area as well, Candace Kopec. So I don't know if any one of them just want to speak a little bit more and introduce themselves.
Okay, welcome, Sheena, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to join your council meeting tonight. As Dr. Anabelli said, I'm Sheena Grimes, I'm the primary healthcare director for Southeast Nine, which includes the Estevan area.
Okay, thank you, Sheena, and welcome, Candace.
Good evening, I'm Candace Kopec. I'm the primary healthcare manager for Southeast Nine based in Estevan, so I am in Estevan every day. And I know I've been in contact with, with the council in regards to vaccine clinics. So looking forward to other opportunities as we, you know, look into other, other areas where we can maybe partner and be involved together. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Candace. Okay, okay, doctor, back to you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and attempt to share my screen. Okay, it's saying post-disabled participants can share it. So, okay. Sure, I can see it now. So let me try this here. Okay, okay. Perfect, so it works well. Yeah, and I'll let it start by saying a big thank you to the staff there at the city council in Estevan. I know we had presented initially and after that, you guys were very willing, at least to share our vaccine clinic information. And in all fairness, with the immuno bloods that goes out from Judy as well, I think we noticed an uptick in vaccines, which I will speak a little bit more, so that was a good sign, particularly for the non-MRNA vaccines, which in this case was the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And just to let you know now, Health Canada has also approved all that non-MRNA vaccines. And in a distant time, we'll be having that available in Saskatchewan. This is, one of them is called the Nonovax, which is what we call a proteus subunit, which is similar to the hepatitis B vaccine. So that is one which people are already familiar with. So for those who might still be hesitant about the mRNA, we are having even more options. And just recently, Health Canada approved the vaccine from Medicabol, which is also non-MRNA. It's a plant-based vaccine. So we're having more and more non-MRNA vaccine options available for those who might be interested. So I'll get going with that presentation, I do my time in this soon yet, try to make this short. So as is usual with S.H.A., we like to just acknowledge that we are gathering on three, two, four, five, six, eight and ten territory, and in particular, three, four territory for us and the homeland of the making. So recognizing this history is important to our future. And our efforts to close the gap in health outcomes between indigenous and non-indigenous people. So I do pay my respects to the traditional caretakers of this land, and I'm hoping that attendees of this would also reflect on this as well. So just to get us going here, this is the Canadian map, just highlighting COVID-19 test positivity, the seven-day average. This shows that as of February 17, Saskatchewan has the fourth highest test rate and the fourth highest test positivity among provinces. But I want to just say that, please, let's just take this, you know, as just a tip of the iceberg, because really, a lot of provinces, including us here in Saskatchewan, have changed our testing policies. So whatever number was reported here might not be accurate, given simply because, you know, the PCR testing has been open to the entire population, so let's keep that in mind for this data. So this is more with the COVID-19 vaccination across PT's provinces and territories in Canada. So you can see that Saskatchewan now is now at eighty percent for eligible population with two doses. And the fifth, and the, at the fifth highest two-dose uptake among provinces in Canada. Then for the booster, we still rank sixth among provinces in Canada. I think when I looked at it recently, we're further down the line now for even booster doses. So just for us to keep that in mind. So the next, yep, the next slide now holds down a bit on our vaccination rates in our Estevan small area geography. Keep in mind that this is not just Estevan, but it also includes surrounding communities like Lankman and Effort. So what we are seeing is that, that, you know, the older age group still represents a highest vaccination uptake group, and this has the first dose, the second dose and the booster dose as well. I know we'll be struggling, not just us in Estevan, but across the provinces when it comes to our younger population, particularly those who are under the age of forty. Between twenty and forty, I would say, for the most part. So as well, the public health order has been rescinded today, the masking of policy and isolation of cases as well, but we still do have vaccines. And we'll see later that vaccines, you know, is one effective layer of protection we have. And we continue to encourage this as well. So I was still, you know, I'm listening to, you know, your questions or comments that you have after this presentation. So great to see over time in an increase, but we can still do better to have our vaccine rates up. So speaking more about this new variant that really changed our trajectory in December, Omicron. So what we do know about the Omicron in a nutshell is that, you know, there's evidence of increased transmissibility, increased risk of infection, and of course, we found that the vaccines are effective, particularly with the boosters for severe outcomes. Immunization still protects there. And our current dominant variant, which we'll see later, in Saskatchewan, remains still the Omicron. A few things we don't know yet, really wish we had the crystal ball, but we can't say for sure. One of the big thing is the future variants, we are hoping to, but no one knows for sure and how well these variants will, if they arise, escape a vaccine and how severe they will be. So these are some of the things that we continue to monitor from health. So this is just looking at the Omicron surveillance in Saskatchewan. So this is looking from like Christmas, 25th of December, right down to nineteen. So the blue legend is for Delta and the yellow is for Omicron. So you can see that with time, Omicron has just taken over and has become our dominant variant. So this was actually obtained, it's publicly available, and from the weekly integrated EPI report that comes about of the Ministry of Health from the province. So they still try to collect that data for individual, those who are interested to see, you know, specific, particularly area-specific, they can also access that publicly. Yeah, so I'm sure you guys are aware of, in the last couple of weeks, I would say, since late December, we've been dealing with lots of outbreaks in our long-term care facility and other community settings. So we can see the rise in January, but beginning to see a decline in long-term care. But overall, I would say, we still have majority of our long-term care facilities and our seniors, who we know are vulnerable, still at risk for this Omicron. So over the past six weeks, six weeks, sixty-eight outbreaks occurred in long-term care facilities across Saskatchewan, fifty-one in personal care homes and fourteen group homes and one in shelters. Eighty percent of these outbreaks as of February nineteen were still ongoing. So that's where the focus of our work has been now in public health, in these higher settings. So a little bit about the vaccines here, just to show the effectiveness, this is from Saskatchewan, Saskatchewan data as of February fourteenth. So you can see that hospitalization rate comparing the unvaccinated to those with two doses and those with three doses. So those who are unvaccinated are two times more likely to be hospitalized as compared to individuals with two doses and five times more likely to be hospitalized compared with people with three doses. So I'm showing the effectiveness of the vaccine there. And also the similar trend for ICU, where admission of ICU rates were unvaccinated are four times as likely to be admitted into the ICU as compared to those with two doses and ten times as compared to individuals with the booster dose. Then for the death rate, similar trend, unvaccinated, six times compared to those with two doses and really huge death difference, twenty-three times compared to those with three doses. So I mean, for those severe outcomes, for sure, we can see clearly here that they are protective, the vaccines. So I just felt this was a good study also from the US, just talking about the Omicron and showing that adults who were unvaccinated had five times higher risk of infection compared with adults who were fully vaccinated with the booster. So overall, we can see there's still effectiveness, even with symptomatic infection from studies like this. So I know today, I mean, all public health orders have been rescinded, but what does that mean for us? I mean, I just put this line in here to just sort of help us understand the thinking, at least from a public health perspective. So when we think about interventions in public health, the very left shows very restrictive measures, which we try not to go to in public health, limiting people's choice and restricting choices, right? We tend now, our approach now is moving further to the right, where it's a health promotion sort of intervention, where we try to guide choices and make, you know, the easy choice, the default choice, the easy choice, so to speak. So just guiding the choice. So that really has informed a lot of, sort of, thinking now and approach currently. So here, we are with the health promotion strategy, trying to promote self-monitoring, self-testing and also self-management. And for individuals who are having, like, severe symptoms, they can still present with primary healthcare partners, like our family physicians or even the U.D., depending on the severity of symptoms. But overall, this is, we want to move further down to the right as we transition in this phase of COVID now. Then this, particularly with COVID, it's a set of slides, set of slides that was developed by the Ministry of Health, but I think the overall approach from the former slide is quite important. I mean, we've had COVID with us now for, I would say, close to two years, and we now know at least a few things better than when we first started. So when you look at this, it just talks about, you know, living with COVID, expectations for cases, expectations of, for contacts as well. And it also talks about, you know, the purpose of public health. So right now, in this shift or transition, we still want to, you know, detect communicable diseases in a timely manner, and that's why we still have our different surveillance programs ongoing, like we use for seasonal respiratory diseases. So we are now transitioning to that, where we'll monitor lab reports, we'll monitor physicians' reports as well from patients they see, and also looking to our partners like schools and the rest when they start having more cases. So that will help us understand better where things are at in our community. And of course, with surveillance, we want to provide anyone in the community so that we as a community can take appropriate measures in a timely manner as well. And we continue to track, you know, trends in epidemiology. Right now, I know from public health, our focus is more on what we call the lagging indicator, things like hospitalizations, ICU and mortality, that's where we are monitoring. I do know that some areas of the province though have this wastewater surveillance. We don't have yet in Estevan, either do we have yet in Wibon, but it's a work in progress. But that, that also would help to determine better what's the risk in the community and can help with, I would say, recommendations or encouraging the public on what actions to take. But overall, for the wastewater, what we are noticing in Saskatchewan is showing that it's plateauing. Actually, in some areas, we're also noticing a decline, which is also a good thing, showing that likely overall in communities around Saskatchewan, we're seeing a decline in community cases. But I think this is important, these risk factors and risk groups, so that, you know, when we gather with friends or even with our family, we can identify individuals who are more at risk and perhaps, you know, modify our behavior or our actions, particularly when we are around these individuals. So one of them is those with increased age are more at risk. Studies show that if you are male, you are more at risk. And if you've got all the pre-existing medical conditions like diabetes, obesity and hypertension and COPD, you know, you are more at risk. And with being more at risk, you, we encourage that you even take some additional layers of protection. And if those around you who are immunocompetent can also help out in, you know, taking these enhanced precautions as well. So I think this is a familiar slide, we are all used to the Swiss cheese model of things we can do. So if individuals, if you belong to this high-risk group, we still continue to encourage, you know, masking, particularly if you're in a very large public setting or if you have people who are vulnerable around you in your household, we need to be mindful as we move into this health promotion approach. So if you still have to mask around those individuals, of course, we encourage, like in, in schools now, making it mask-friendly, it's not, no longer mandatory. So this is sort of the set of recommendations, particularly for those who are in the higher risk groups. So this is just another study from CDC that looks at the various layers of intervention and, you know, just talking about the effectiveness. So they found that the spread was lower among household contacts when the person was isolated from others, wore a mask in their home and were up to date with their vaccines. So basically promoting the multi-component COVID-19 prevention strategy, which includes being up to date with our vaccines, isolation of infected persons and masks used at home to reduce Omicron transmission. So same thing, this also is a slide that just looks at the effectiveness of masking. Some mask is better than no mask at all. So right now, now they are shifting to self-management approach and keeping in mind individuals in the high-risk group. So they might want to still continue, you know, masking when in crowded places and in those settings. So in summary, our message is here is for individuals who are unvaccinated to know that they are at highest risk still. And the slide showed that, you know, the risk of dying is approximately five times for unvaccinated as compared to individuals who are vaccinated with three doses. And with three doses, your risk of dying is even higher, twenty-five times. So I think part of our approach moving into spring is encouraging everyone to be up to date with their vaccines, not just one dose, two doses, but all doses that you are eligible for, at least to have that added layer of protection. So I think we spelled individuals who are most at risk there. And of course, masking and other layer interventions, particularly for those in the high-risk group of, for those who are immunocompetent, but around them, should also be mindful of their behaviors. So that's my presentation, and this is where things are at with COVID. And I'm open to questions or comments, like most suggestions as well, that I could take to the various tables that I can want to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, doctor, and ladies, we'll open the floor for any questions from any of the councillors. Councillor Cernik.
Thank you for coming tonight. Sorry, excuse me, I was just wondering, you did mention some new vaccines coming out. Are there any of the therapeutic pills available and has there been any success with them?
Oh, thank you, council, that's a very good question. And yes, I would say there is a therapeutics provincial committee that is looking into that. I can say for sure, I'll give Sheena and Candace opportunity to try it as well. But we do have the monoclonal antibody, I think it's called Sotrogimab, which is available for individuals that intravenous sort of regimen. But also, I know that, you know, within the province, we are trying to promote, like, the vaccine and others, and there is a special group working on that, such that once it's available, physicians will also, you know, get a hold of it and can prescribe to, to members of our community that fits, meets the criteria for it. So I do know that, yes, we have some of it available. I think in Estevan we also do have it, but I'll give Sheena, perhaps Candace the opportunity to speak to the, at the meeting for the monoclonal antibody.
Thank you, Dr. Anabelli, yes. So the new process for those who require to be tested for COVID are to call 811. And at that time, the 811 nurses will actually do a screening process to see if the person is a candidate for that treatment. And if it is deemed appropriate, they will be referred to be able to receive those treatments. And as Dr. Anabelli had mentioned, it is available in Estevan.
Okay, thank you, Sheena, any other questions, Tony? Nothing? Okay, go ahead, councillor Walizer.
Thanks, your worship. My question tonight is regarding people looking to get vaccinated. Should they be contacting public health directly for appointments? Or are they still waiting for the next pop-up clinic to occur?
Thank you for that question, I can answer that. So we continued for the month of March in the location where we have been for a number of months. So the West Estevan Mall, the building across the street from the hospital. I just shared the poster for the clinic dates in March. So Judy has that and Jeff has that, so you guys make, my apologies for setting late, I was off for most of last week and realized didn't do that. But, so tomorrow, March first, March fifteenth and March twenty-ninth, we are going to continue to hold our clinics at the West Estevan Mall. We either, we do both booked appointments and walk-in appointments. And I just looked, actually, when we started this meeting, and we're about fifty percent booked for Pfizer, so we have lots of walk-ins if people are interested, and there won't be a long wait because we have enough nurses. After March, our plan is to continue providing vaccines in the public health office. So we will communicate, I will send that communication out, but it will be likely then that you will phone the public health office to book an appointment.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Kirsten? Okay, anyone else on council? Okay, well, thank you so much, Dr. Anabelli and Sheena and Candace, for being with us this evening and answering all the questions. Thank you so much and good evening, unless you have anything else to say, doctor?
No, thanks so much, Mayor, and thanks everyone else for having us. And we look forward to continuing to partner, you know, with the team here for other public health concerns as they arise, you know, for our communities in Estevan and other geographies as well. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you all so much and good evening. Okay.
See you, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, good night. Okay, moving forward, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Councillor Roba, seconded by councillor Walizer. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on February fourteenth, St. Valentine's Day? Councillor Frank, thank you. Sorry, if both your hands go up, Tony, I gotta go with the good-looking woman over you, sorry. Okay, seconded by councillor Ford, all in favor? Carrie. Next, under original communications, delegations and petitions, we have from the Estevan strippers, the request for an events permit for the 2022 hockey tourney. Hello, Mayor, City Council, the stripper hockey, hockey club is hosting our annual Spring Bust Hockey Tournament this year after a couple of years off due to circumstances out of our control. We are expecting forty teams, at least twenty from out of town, to participate in this year's tournament. We want to make sure all the teams, along with the people of the city of Estevan, can have a great time during this event. We would like to request the use of the curling rink as a beer garden and event center for the annual Estevan Strippers Spring Bust Hockey Tournament. We would like the city of Estevan's approval for a special events permit so we may obtain our liquor license for April 6th to 10th of 2022. The schedule for the alcohol sales, April 6th, four to two, April 7th, four P.M. to two A.M., that would be April 8th, two P.M. to two A.M., April 9th, two P.M. to two A.M. and April 10th, ten A.M. to ten P.M. Thank you for your consideration, Steve Godfrey. So what's the wish of council on this one? Councillor Roba.
I think it's a great opportunity for the city and for the strippers to be able to host that tournament again. They do great things in our community with the money raised, so I think it's a good sign for times ahead that they're posting their commitment to host this tournament, so acceptance and approval, I think.
Okay, thank you councillor Roba for that. Councillor Frank, you'll second that? Okay, any further questions? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations and petitions, councillor.
I'm gonna call a conflict for this one.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's because you run the show over there?
Yeah, so I don't think I have to leave the room for this one, but I'll just go to the gallery.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, thank you councillor Roba. Let it be noted that councillor Roba, for the time being, will be in the gallery, watching intently. Okay, so what's the wish of the Duale Pianos for council? I know in the past, it's always been very successful. Councillor Frank.
Thanks, your worship, I absolutely would support this, I believe she's even got a sold-out event, so let's definitely, yeah, go ahead and buy a table if we still can, I think that would be good for us.
Yeah, and hopefully we still can, just give us a nod councillor Roba, we still can. Yeah, and hopefully we still can. Just give us a nod, Counselor Vroba. We still can, good.
I'm assuming she could, we, we can or she wouldn't have asked. Let's go with that. But yes, I, I think it'd be good. I know in the past the city has, uh, bought tables for these events before, so I would, I would definitely be in support of doing that.
Okay, thank you for that and thank you, Counselor Walezer, for suggesting that. So we have the motion. Ready for the question? Oh, okay, thank you, Counselor Cernik. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Let it be noted that Counselor Vroba has now taken her position back in council chambers. Okay, next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Estevan Bruins, the minutes of January thirty-first. I don't know, Counselor Ford, if you wanted to speak to this at all, anything jump out at you?
Uh, nothing major tonight. Just a reminder that Wednesday is the last, uh, home game at Affinity for the season and there's only three games left. So if you wanna go out and see the Bruins play one last time this year before playoffs, make sure you get out on Wednesday and we're in number one place. Holy, let's try that again. We're in first place. We're number one. So yeah, make sure you get out there and support your Bruins.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Ford. Good point. Hopefully we can pack the shack. So did we need a motion to accept the, okay, thank you, City Clerk. So Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any further questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Under executive reports, this evening we have none. Introduction of bylaws, we have none, although we have a couple later. Uh, public hearings and reports, we have none. Giving notice, we have none. Motions from committee, we have none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, now after a couple of weeks after given first reading, we now have bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-fifty-two, the solid waste amendment to commercial receptacles, second and third reading. So first of all, I will ask that bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-fifty-two be given second reading at this time. Could we have a motion please for second reading? Thank you, Counselor Walezer. Have we got a seconder? Thank you, Counselor Vroba. And at this point, I'll ask any questions or comments you'd like to ask or suggest or make any comments at all on this bylaw, seeing none? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Now I will ask for third reading and adoption for use for bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-fifty-two. Do we have a motion for that, please? Thank you, Counselor Clark. Seconded by Counselor Frank, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, we'll ask for bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-fifty-three, animal control for second reading at this time. Thank you, Counselor Cernik. We wanted to wait for you because you're on the board, correct? Okay, thank you, Counselor Walezer, for giving us the second on that. And any questions or comments? Counselor Cernik.
Um, just I noticed that we do have a dangerous animal bylaw as well. Is this something that should be all put in together? Doesn't really matter.
City Clerk.
Your worship to Counselor Cernik, no, it's actually separate because it has a lot of different criteria and stuff that has to be met as a dangerous dog. Um, this was brought forward by bylaw for the few changes it is and currently they don't have any change requests for the other ones, so.
But, but having said that, Counselor Cernik, uh, if with your discussion with the Humane Society, if you feel there should be changes to the dangerous, uh, dog bylaw, you could bring that forward to us. We could look at the changes and change that as well, if you wish. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Thank you. That's carried. Uh, next, I'll ask Counselor Vroba, did you have a question? You look questioning.
I was actually looking at City Clerk.
Oh.
Did you need someone to make that motion or you?
I'm coming to third reading, yeah.
Then I'm terrified.
You're terrified?
No, I'm terrified.
Oh, well, we don't want you being terrified, you know, at this meeting, so anyway. Okay, good. At this point, we'll ask for third reading and adoption for use of bylaw twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-fifty-three, the animal control bylaw. Counselor Vroba, thank you. And, thank you, Counselor Clark. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, we move to inquiries. Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Worship. I just had two. The first one was, uh, kudos to the city for the speedy snow removal on Third Street in a vacant lot. Last time we had a dump of snow, they were very happy and so they phoned to pass it along. The other thing is the Estevan Public Use Center is moving into their new space. And so, um, on Friday, March fourth, will be the first night from five-thirty to ten-thirty. And then also watch for after-school drop-ins in the next coming weeks. That'll be coming up. So Julie Jubba is the director over there and she's doing a great job and, uh, we look forward to the great things that'll be coming out of there.
Thank you, Counselor Vroba. And the new address is?
Sixth Street. It's the old Genesis cleaner. Sorry that I don't.
On the corner.
Yes, but we're gonna get a sign put up and it will be the new Estevan Public Use Center. But unfortunately, I don't have the exact.
Oh, that's okay. Everyone knows in this community where the Genesis.
The old Genesis cleaner, right across from Kendall's Auto Supply, you will see the Estevan Public Use Center opening up.
Thank you for that and it's probably better to use a lab mark than give the actual address, right? Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Clark.
Nothing today, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Walezer.
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. I actually just had a, an interesting question today. I just wanna let everybody know that we as a city stand with Ukraine and for all the heartbreaking things that are happening. And if anybody's experienced any mental health issues or needing to talk to somebody, reach out to somebody, uh, contact two-on-one. It's confidential. You can call them or you can text them and they can, they can let you know who to get a hold of or they can put you in contact with the right mental health resources. So I really highly advise people to do that from, from anywhere if you're dealing with anything, but mostly with that situation right now because it's, a lot of people don't know where to go or who to talk to right now.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Good point. Even coming off of COVID, they could use that help. And yeah, that's horrendous what's happening over there, so hopefully that can be turned around. Counselor Cernik.
Thank you, Worship. I have a couple tonight. Uh, one were just some street lights around the RCMP barracks that have been flickering and not working correctly. Um, talked with the city manager about those and they'll get them looked after. And then the second one was although we have beautiful facilities, uh, the shower heads at both Affinity and, and Power Dodge Arena are kinda insufficient, if you will. And, uh, the Power Dodge Arena always has a little bit of cold water, so you could almost chalk that up to first-world problems, but, but it's just something behind the scenes that nobody gets to see, I guess, so.
Yeah, from time to time, we have to update the shower heads and nothing wrong with a splash of cold water. It really wakes you up, but, uh, I do understand you want hot to come after that.
Yeah, there's a lot of person here to wash under one little screen.
Okay, uh, city manager, did you wanna make a comment?
Counselor Cernik to worship your mayor. So the streetlights, so, uh, just so everybody knows, the, the streetlights are run by SAS Power. Um, so any indication of flickering streetlights, like the, the lighted power poles, uh, should go to SAS Power. Obviously, we have a contact, so we will forward those along. Uh, but there is a great app that you can actually identify every single light in the city that you can click on and it'll go directly to SAS Power to let them know if there's a street light out. So just so people know that, but again, if people don't have that app, they can phone and we will get that address through norm MAC. Uh, in regards to the shower heads, we are looking at that today. Uh, the ones in the Power Dodge Arena were recently renovated. That was done in the last year and they are, uh, tamper-proof ones. So there may be some sort of settings there we're gonna look at. And we are looking at the canisters for, it should be on-demand heat as well on there, so we're digging into those as well.
Thank you, city manager. And contrary to popular opinion, the RCMP are not using those lights for target practice. Just wanted to clarify. Counselor Frank.
I didn't know that was popular opinion, so that's good to know. You know, I just wanted to give kudos to the theater for holding a great concert this weekend. I heard a lot of good things. So, uh, just thanks for bringing that to our community, filling our restaurants and our hotels, so that's always good to them, so.
Absolutely, thank you. And we thank Al and Jocelyn for the great job that they do down at the Orpheum. Uh, much appreciated. City manager?
Uh, nothing, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, city clerk, did you have any comments?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Nothing this evening? Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, uh, do we have a motion to move into closed? Thank you, Counselor Frank, seconded by Counselor Ford. All in favor? Carried, thank you very much and good evening. We stand closed.